Okay, this February 5th, 2020, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. It's good to see us all here. And we were just in the deliberative session yesterday evening. And thanks to all who presented. Thanks to all who are there. And particularly Brian, thanks to you for an excellent presentation on the middle school. I thought you did a fantastic job.
Thank you. My pleasure.
First order of business, the approval of the agenda. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda? Denise?
Still moved.
Moved by Denise. It's their second. Second by Brian. All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor. Student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Public comments? No? No? Okay. The approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the January 22nd regular minutes? Denise?
A motion to approve the, yeah, the regular meeting minutes from January 22nd.
Moved by Denise. Second by Dan. Okay. Are there changes?
I just had one addition. Page four, essentially the answer to a question that I asked. So page four, so after Dan Klein asked if middle school, high school world language teachers meet regularly, I just asked that we add, Todd Allen replied, teachers meet at least monthly and sometimes more often than that.
Okay. Are there other changes?
Yeah. Just in the same page, on page four, on my comment, which is just right above Dan's. Denise Day asked what it looked like now in the classroom. Asked, is the proficiency model being used in the classroom currently?
Others? Harry Dunn, all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor. The student rep in favor. Motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes. Denise?
To make a motion to approve the non-public meeting minutes for January 22nd.
Moved by Denise. Second by Brian. Changes?
This is details, but I believe that the way these end, you just declare us no longer in the, in the non-public, and then the motion from Al was only to adjourn the public meeting.
That's correct.
Okay. Do you have those changes? Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor. Student rep, I don't, I think you were not there, so you probably stayed.
Oh, okay. I didn't see you there.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks. So, well. Announcements, commendations, comments from the district?
Good evening.
Good evening.
We know that at the last board meeting, Mr. Allen gave you the letter that we sent out for kindergarten registration and talked a little bit about it. Kindergarten registration has just begun, and we just wanted to give you a quick update and to remind viewers who might be at home that we are having kindergarten registration at both Mastway and Moheramit. The times are 9:30 to 2:30 this week. We were open until 6:00 tonight for registration as well. We're also going to have registration for two days next week. Monday, from 9:30 to 2:30. And then Tuesday during the teacher workshop voting, primary day, from 8:00 to 3:00 during the whole day at school. And as in the past, you know, we've advertised with the towns, we've advertised with all of the organizations, the papers, and the preschools in the area. Our focus is, of course, on creating equitable classes and efficient and effective transportation. I know you had some conversation last time as to how we're going to be announcing school assignment as well as class assignment in the beginning of August. And we've been communicating that to the families as they come to register as well. At Moheramit, so far up to 5:00 tonight, we had 25 students enrolled. At the end of our third day last year, we had 33. I don't know if you can always draw a comparison to what that means at all. Last year, we ended up having 45 during the entire registration week, from 33 in the first three days. And we had, we ended up with 57, of course, by the start of the school year. So, right now, we're at 25. People are coming in, they're excited. We've had a few families go to Mastway to do their registration. We've had some people at Mastway register and then have their papers sent to us. We're going to use that just for screening based on where their home actually is. And then we still have let them know that we'll be making decisions in August based on our numbers.
I apologize, I don't have more historical data for you for Mastway. I'm happy to find more historical information and send the board. I can tell you that as of tonight at 6:00 PM, there were 35 students registered at Mastway for kindergarten. But like I say, I'm happy to look up more historical longitudinal-type data for where we were at at this point in the future if the board would like that.
On the 19th, we can give you a full presentation about where we are at the end of the registration period. Of course, we continue to register, always in fact. We register today for tomorrow, but we've started kindergarten, we can give you a full report. Does anyone have any questions or comments about kindergarten registration? It's exciting to see all the new families, of course, coming in.
If I may, just because I met a new friend today named Savannah, and she walked in large and in charge and ready to run the school, and just walked right up to the counter like, where do I sign? So these kids are coming in, pumped for kindergarten. It's really exciting to see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there some in the district?
Good evening. I just wanted to let the board know that Tim Lawrence, one of the art teachers in the high school, will be having an art show. He's part of the art show, the Kidderi Art Foundation Association in February. And he'll be running throughout February. And his show will spotlight quite a bit of his work, and it's called Moments of Silence. We also have two students that will be also showing. Madison Hopler and Connor Quigley will also be part of the show, and that again is at the Kidderi Art Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Others from the district? No, from the board? Denise?
The latest issue of The Mouth of the River, the student news magazine, is out, and it's wonderful. And just a reminder that anyone can subscribe, and they have, and I wanted to bring it tonight, but I forgot, but they have, they're on Facebook, mouthoftheriver.org might be their own, yeah, mouthoftheriver.org. So, check it out, there's a lot of information on, that's the old one, but still, yeah. So anyway, it's good. Thanks.
I went to the, a couple weeks ago, I was at the school board's assembly. Just want to mention Matt Pappas, who's a teacher at the high school, who's on the Rochester board, and the Rochester board was the board of the year. And Matt gave this great presentation, in-depth knowledge of what's going on in that district. And I just think he's done so much to engage students and how he himself has walked the walk in this, you know, so much, such a great participant in the Rochester school board. It has been for years, so I wanted to mention that. Also, at the assembly, you know, it's the third time we brought the resolution on guns. And in the past, the board has recommended against it, and it has failed by fairly close margins. This year, the board decided to support it. And I know the director was uncomfortable thinking that he was going to get another kind of split vote, maybe, you know, slightly more favorable to the resolution. But the final vote was 45 in favor, four against, and three abstentions. So this dramatic turn of the board, so they'll go into, you know, the legislative hearings with this, this pretty resounding vote in favor of restricted guns. And also, there will be a, you know, another law that's going to be put forward, House Bill 1285, which will be consistent with our resolution. So I'll keep track of when that comes to, for testimony and make sure that I can, I'll be there. So, so things are moving again on. It still may, still may end up with the Republicans voting to support a veto, but I still think we need to keep at it, and so we will.
Can I ask a question? Yes, I mean, do you know if there's any student groups that are concerned about guns in schools and safety in schools that might, you know, we as a school board make this presentation, but perhaps if there's an interest in students, that, you know, that testimony could be very compelling.
There's not that many student groups that I know, but I know that that is like a constant fear among students, and I have that conversation with my friends. So I definitely think there's like a crowd of people that would be interested in having that conversation.
This is a great, you know, to impact that legislative system at that point is...
I thought it would be, I don't know if this is possible, but if there's to be interest in the student senate here to contact other schools in the area and then have a, you know, a delegation that might go to testify when it comes up. I mean, it's really an interesting process to testify, and believe me, on this issue, it's a really interesting issue to testify.
I could definitely bring that to the student senate.
Uh huh. Good. And then maybe if there are other schools, you know, maybe, maybe kind of create a kind of a consortium or something like that. Great. Others? Okay. Okay. District reports, assistant superintendents?
Is at the Durham Energy Commission tonight.
Okay. Superintendent?
Sure. So I would like to take a few moments to thank the community, the members of the community who showed up last night for deliberative session. We had one of the best attendants that we've had in really years. And I know people were watching it through the streaming as well. I also want to let the people who did contact me and were concerned, I'm okay. Just, I know some people in the audience thought I had a stroke, and it was really just the accident of a chair falling between the cracks of the stage and the stairs, and so I'm okay. I do want to thank the music staff for last night. That was amazing. That is a, was an unscheduled concert that they agreed to do. I want to thank the NHS for the childcare last night, so that parents were able to attend. So that was a pretty amazing piece for our parents. And I thought that, as Tom alluded to, I thought Brian did a fantastic job doing the presentation on the middle school, and Tom did a great job on the budget, and Dan did a great job on the article on the teachers. I got an email today from the teachers appreciating the advocacy and support they received. So, I mean, for a deliberative session, I thought it was really one of the very, very best that we've done since I've been here. Then going on to the issues I wanted to talk to you tonight about, the Guild contract has a clause in it where I'm required to bring the concept of retirement incentive to the board annually, does not require the board to be proactive and approve it, it's just that I need to put it on the agenda. I've been talking to Guild leadership and explaining to them the circumstance we face in 2021, 22, where a retirement incentive would make immense sense to the district. But as I look at this current school year, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend a retirement incentive this year. But I will, I would just put it out there, I definitely will be recommending one for the 21, 22 school year. So, I don't know if the board needs to take any action, or somebody disagrees and wants to put it on the table for consideration, but I'm not recommending it this year. Not seeing anybody jumping on that. Dan suggested that we look into the idea of renting our fields in the springtime, that there may be some organizations that would like to use our fields. And we didn't have that in our schedule of fees. And so Andy went ahead and he investigated what was being charged around the communities for field use. And we would like to make a recommendation that we have a fee for the use of our fields for $150 per doubleheader. That would require action of this body because we need to add it to the fee schedule. So, open for discussion on that one.
So I'll just offer a little additional background. The, and this would be the baseball and softball fields specifically. There are a number of different travel programs in the region. And with, with baseball and softball fields, when you have a dirt infield, the more you utilize the field, assuming you're not suffering a drought, for example, and you're burdening the grass, the more you use the field, the easier it is to maintain in the long run. You have less issues with weeds, you tend not to have to spray for weeds using pesticides and that sort of thing. Just the routine maintenance of dragging the field to smooth it out to make it playable sort of makes that less necessary. And the other thought that was involved in our discussions was it would be nice, and Andy Lathrop agreed, if we had some batting cages at some point. I believe, if I remember correctly, when USA Training Center in Newington closed, they donated a portion of their netting to Oyster River High School. So we already have, as I understand it, netting that we could use for batting cages. It would be a matter of establishing some sort of a foundation, whether it be cement. I think in most cases, it works well to just have clay or dirt, and just erect some posts so that that netting could be utilized for both the baseball and softball programs. And then this would, at $150 per doubleheader, which Andy discovered is sort of like the going rate in the region, it would allow us to sort of gradually bring in some income to cover the costs that would be needed to make that happen. So that's the background.
So would you like to make a motion or give a question?
I have a question. Just in light of issues that we're having with other facilities in terms of conflict, do you anticipate that that would create issues with our own teams or, you know?
Great question.
It would never create a conflict with our own teams because our policy is adamant that our students get first juice regardless of requests.
And in addition to that, the demand for full-size baseball, I know less about softball, but I believe it's a similar dynamic with softball. The full 90-foot baseball field, there's far less demand for in town rec programs. The major, the highest rates of participation go up until about age 12, and those are either done on what they call 60-foot or 70-foot fields, which we do not have. The participation really drops off significantly at age 13 because kids then play, so for example, in Cal Ripken and Babe Ruth, they transition to a full-size 90-foot field. The, the association that serves our district uses Little River Park for that, which is more than, that's actually a really nice field. That's on weekends, and our school plays only on weekdays, so there's no inherent conflict there. So, but excellent question.
Okay. Have a motion?
And just, I think clarifying with Denise, so basically this fits totally into the policy that we have, and the only thing that we're doing is we're adding to that our document part that has fee schedule.
Exactly.
And we're putting this in, but the pecking order stays the same.
Pecking order is exactly the same, we haven't touched that.
Right.
And just one other point, all of the travel programs that I'm aware of are for-profit programs. So if a, if a conflict were to arise, that mechanism within our policy that prioritizes nonprofits would eliminate, would resolve that conflict.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to, to approve the recommended $150 per doubleheader fee to be added to our fee schedule. And I'm not sure, do we need to identify if it's for-profit, nonprofit?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. On the for-profit fee schedule, at a rate, a doubleheader rate.
Okay. Moved by Dan. It's their second?
I'll second.
Second by Michael.
Okay. That's fine.
Other questions? Hearing done, all in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, that fee schedule is approved. Dr. Morris?
Thank you. So in addition to, you know, dealing, Andy, Andy's had direct contact with ORYA, Todd has had direct conversations with ORYA. Just want to, just remind the board where we were. Andy wrote me a memo to refresh my memory, so I'll just refresh, refresh yours, that there were concerns raised by very few community members, perhaps around six in total, that have contacted me, around the fairness of the decision to award Maximum Velocity slots on Mondays and Wednesday evenings, forcing ORYA to use slots on Fridays. The problem that existed was Fridays was also a ski club, you might recall. And so I asked Andy to sit with Maximum Velocity and ORYA to see if they could resolve the issue. We were pretty well into the winter sports season, and Maximum Velocity rightly said, you know, it would be, you know, detrimental to our program to adjust our times to meet ORYA's requests. Just want to remind the board, the reason we were in that situation is the new policy requires, in this case, these two nonprofits to provide us their participation lists and which town they're from. And that becomes important to the new policy if we are in a tiebreaker situation. Maximum Velocity got us that information on the due date. Three weeks waiting on ORYA, I directed Andy to assign MV slots because I didn't think it was fair to hold up the assignment of gym use because one organization hadn't produced the required rosters. To this day, ORYA has not provided the required rosters. So one organization provided them on time, the other organization provided them never. So I, part of the problem is the communication that ORYA was giving their parent participants. One of the parents came to me with those communications, and they were at no point acknowledging that the issue they were in was because ORYA did not provide us the rosters. So they were kind of pushing the responsibility outside of themselves, and the parent was upset because she felt that ORYA was throwing the district under the bus. So that is kind of where we are today. In the end, Andy was able to resolve ORYA's gym time by opening up the Mastway School, which gave them full court access. So Andy did a great job of resolving the conflict. The issue that I struggle with is the communication that's coming out of ORYA that implies that it's the district's favoring MV over ORYA. I just want to make a public statement that the way the policy is written, it's impossible for me to favor, or Andy to favor, any organization. The language in the policy is really clear. Both organizations were told due dates. We've met with them for spring sports already. They've been told the due dates. So the reason that MV got the times that they wanted before ORYA is because they complied with policy. I think that's fair. You know, why would one organization have to wait until another organization got their stuff in? And so I would make that same decision tomorrow. So we'll see. We have the spring sports out there, we've met with both organizations, Andy has a good working relationship with both organizations. I think the difference between the winter sports and the spring sports is he's put the request in writing and stated when the rosters are due. And we'll see. But I think the point of, of tonight is to say that the district has been incredibly generous in providing facilities to these organizations now at no charge, but ORYA literally for, yet years and years and years, has never been charged. And the district encourages community use, not discourages it. And the policy was designed to promote maximum use of our facilities by the nonprofits that service our children. We spent a lot of time on that policy to make sure that it was a fair and, and open policy that we had, very clear dynamics in the policy. And, you know, I wouldn't change a word of the policy. I think you guys worked on it really over about a year and a half. So as we're enforcing the policy, it's up to the, the nonprofits to meet the requirements of the policy. We want them to use our facilities. They want to be treated equitably, then they need to meet the deadlines established by the athletic director, which are generous. It's not saying I need it tomorrow. I sent you the memo that Andy sent out, that really spells it out, and they have plenty of time to provide the required information. So I think the next step for me, because we have talked to the executive director, Todd talked to him as recently as last week, is to request a meeting with the board of directors and go over the policy with them so that they have a clear understanding of the expectations of the school district. Message being, we want you to use our facilities, follow our policy. So that's my message for tonight.
Jim, I couldn't agree with you more. And what would it be coming back to a school board meeting without making some sort of joke? But in your use of, we don't only encourage people, we've set a policy to have maximum use of our facility, we don't mean maximum meaning Maximum Velocity.
Correct.
We mean maximum of anybody.
Yeah, thank you.
So, you know, again, I thank you for all that. I mean, to me, clearly we, everything was really about encouraging people to use our facilities. We have really great facilities, and it's not only where kids make friends, but it's where parents make friends, and it's how we build community. So actually, my only suggestion is we've made a lot of changes to the policy, and I know we're always, scheduling is always, there's always going to be something. But just, I think what we, would be nice is sending out, particularly for the summer thing, what exactly the policy is so everybody in the community is clear. And my mindset on that, I always was worried like, okay, so tomorrow the Oyster River Bachi League is going to start. How do I do that? So it's like, the mindset is really sending out, here's what the policy is, we really are encouraging you. The most important thing is you have to get your rosters in by this date, or actually, you have to get, there will be a time that you have to get that in. So that gives like, not just the big group people like ORYA, or Maximum Velocity, or Durham Parks and Rec, or any of those people to like get theirs in, but anybody of a new organization that's thinking about starting, it gives them a kind of a heads up. And then the only second thing I would add in there is that we also do, before the window's going to open up for whatever it be, the summer or the fall or whatever that, we just send a heads out, up to everybody like, hey, by the way, if your, your rosters are due by X amount of days. So that way, it's, this isn't about singling out any single organization, it's really about us making, and again, and we've probably already done it, but just getting the policy out there again, this is how you do it. If you're new, by the way, I'll throw in there, the other thing is like Andy has a ton of experience with sports team, and if you're trying to figure out how to get it started, go talk to Andy, please, because he'll help you. And that, it's just a heads up to the community, and then a reminder of when the due dates are. And I think, I think that is about the best we can do.
Great. Brad?
What, how do we deal with the issue of them not producing rosters and all that? If, if that is a practice that continues with them?
Well, if they continue to not provide the rosters, they're continuing to be on the back of the bus every time we start it, you know, I guess the, the penalty involved is they got to use our facilities, but they didn't get to get access to them equal with, with another nonprofit. If they want to be, you know, at the table on an equal basis, they have to put their rosters in on time. So the penalty is you don't get your first choice. I mean, they never have gotten their rosters in, and we're still letting them use our facilities. It's just that they were complaining about the days they got.
What, did they say why they didn't do it? It's not that, you'd think that would be a burden, some...
No. I just, I don't, I don't have an answer to that, Tom.
Thank you for the very detailed thorough background and update. One of my concerns all along has been the really in-... One of my concerns all along has been the really inordinate amount of time that, you know, you yourself, Dr. Morris, Todd Allen, Andy Lathrippe, Jim Rozicki have spent trying to remediate the situation. And, you know, to some degree, with a new policy, with extensive changes, we anticipate some sort of a curve that we're going to go through. My understanding of this situation, though, wasn't related to any sort of misunderstanding. It was just, you know, it was just a decision that was made by a particular organization. If you, if you have, if you, if you're confident that you have the time to go meet with their board as you described.
Well, I can ask, they can.
Well, right, they would, I take that. But I guess I would rather we focus on our energies on what Al describes, which is maybe getting a little more detail out to the general community about how it works and sort of what our high level thinking is in terms of equity and accessibility and all those sorts of things. And then the other piece going forward that, well, I guess one other issue is it's a very difficult thing to address and I'm not sure there's a good way to do it. But there are a number of parents out there who received communications that portrayed our district in a negative light and very inaccurately described the process. I'd like to think there's a way to get the correct version of what happened to those individuals, but I don't know what that is.
Right.
You had mentioned last week, perhaps, offering a meeting with parents. I'm not sure if parents are interested in a meeting.
Yeah.
So that might be one avenue. I did speak with Todd after, so I guess it was Thursday of last week. He had had his conversation with their director. He did tell me that one of his requests was that they correct the incorrect narrative. Have we received any indication that they've done that or?
None.
Okay.
That's why I want to meet with their leadership.
Okay.
I mean, it's one thing, you know, Andy and Todd are true gentlemen and they sit at the same table with both groups. Everybody's being polite, everybody's being respectful. And then people leave the table and then a letter like that's produced, which indicates that, you know, they don't want to own the problem. That's what it indicated to me.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you know, if I was being like that and people would come here and they would speak to the directors and say, you know, the superintendent isn't being responsive, you would hear that from the community. But this is a non-public that has a choice of hearing me or not hearing me.
Right.
And I think that out of respect, we have told the executive director, we found the letter misleading directly. And so the next step to me would be to talk to his directors and say, you know, this letter was misleading. And then follow Al's advice. The new policy does require a roster because that's, we need to know where the kids are coming from. And, you know, if they continue to ignore that section of the policy, then they still got use of the facilities, they just didn't get their, their prime choice.
Yeah.
And we didn't keep them from using the facility. We just said, okay, well, you know, one organization's on time, then let's go to town. The other one wasn't. You get what's left.
I mean, the other thing too, I hate to bring, but besides the scheduling stuff, there's some other stuff in the policy, particularly adhering to what all of those standards are. I really, you know, I know we do when everybody registers, but if we're going to send it out to the people, kind of, these are really important things, insurance, rosters, all that. Just because, again, I, I mean, I'm always proved wrong because it's the big users that end up being a problem. But I still, in my mind, always think of the new programs that may arise, that we never know what they are. And we really want to provide a roadmap for them to like, okay, you want to do this, this is how you do it.
And I think the Friday update and the Lee E. Cryer provide us, you know, an opportunity to reach out to residents in the community who don't have necessarily children in the district. So, you know, there are vehicles we can use that we can get the message out. I think your message, Al, about educating is really important. It's not dramatically different than the old policy, but it's enough different that it, that it needs to be brought forward.
Sometimes you have to nag people.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the other piece of this is that I feel like we're sort of forced into a corner where regardless of what we decide to do or not do, we're conveying a message, right? So this narrative's out there, it's incorrect. If, you know, saying nothing might be read as not, you know, caring so much about the policy or the narrative or saying too much might just be confusing because, you know, the segment of the population that is directly impacted or even knows what's going on is relatively small.
Well, I actually, I actually wrote a letter last week and I gave it to Tom, Tom to read and he said that exact same thing. He said, "This is too detailed, Jim."
So the one other thing I guess we should think about is, and then the third piece is the signal we send by either saying something or not saying something to the, you know, all the other organizations that, you know, all the other third parties that play by the rules, act in good faith. We don't want to convey the message that that's a waste of time, right? That if you disregard the process and say something that's inconsistent with reality, that we're just not going to say anything, you know? So I'm not sure what the right answer is. I think, you know, hopefully we can get some traction.
Well, I'd like to start and see if we could have access to the directors and simply say, this is the new policy. I mean, really, I think, you know, quite frankly, most of the coaches that work for ORYA are our parents.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, like the directors of basketball are our parents. We know who they are. So I can, I can, I have the ability to communicate directly to the coaches if I want to, but I'd like to do the process where we are respectful to the organization first before, you know, I jump over their head and say, oh, by the way.
Right. The other, I guess, going forward piece that I'm concerned about is, and I'm not sure, you know, I just, a very rudimentary analysis of actual utilization. But what I came up with was over 70 hours of booked unused time at the middle school gym alone. And that's a very clear piece of the policy that Andy has personally told me he has reminded every organization is critically important. So it even seems, to make this even worse, there actually wasn't necessarily a shortage of time. It was a matter of preference.
Yes.
And that's a, that's a frustrating thing to wrestle with as well. And I want to, I want to make sure that going forward, we have some sort of way to monitor that actual utilization without.
It was entered in, Dan, as conflict flex time. And so we had, we just assumed that was some part of their schedule until we discovered that conflict flex time was actually openly booked time in case they needed it, which is exactly what we told them not to do when we met with them.
Right. So, I mean, the good news is that we have a system that works. It's just a matter of getting everybody to act in good faith, to participate fully. And frankly, I think what Andy and Jim do, just in terms of facilitating dialogue, goes a long way. And hopefully that will just become, the actual process for resolving conflicts will become less frequent and hopefully they'll be able to get more done just by.
I agree with that. And I think that goes back to another conversation that Al had with the board just a few minutes ago relating to, once, you know, it'll take a while for the thing to embed itself and eventually it'll work like a well-tuned machine. But right now, with these new pieces, it's still clunky and, you know, we need to hold our ground as a board that we refine this policy for maximum use by the community. And if you want maximum use, follow the procedure.
And just to, just while we're talking about it, the tiebreaking procedure in no way biases based on organizational size.
No.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, this isn't on participation, not on the organization.
And it's, one of the, if I remember correctly, one of the reasons we added it was to look for out-of-district participants.
Exactly.
As a means of identifying sort of that tiebreaking metric. Yeah. Okay.
You'll report to us on.
I will let you know whether I get a night, I get a meeting. So then, the last thing I just wanted to run by the board is, the board has this tradition of Candidates Night and when we are in situations like we are this year where their seats are uncontested, whether Candidates Night serves the traditional purpose that it was supposed to serve over the years. I suspect it was a time when the district had multiple people running for the school board and it was a way of people putting their positions out for the public to hear. Recently, we haven't had many contested, in fact, probably any contested seats since, you know, we've all been working together. So the question I had for the board is, there's a lot of work that goes in putting this together, whether it still serves the purposes it was intended or whether the tradition of having a Candidates Night is something you want to hang on to because there's a tradition.
Is there a policy regarding having a Candidates Night?
No.
No. So it's just tradition?
It's just tradition.
Yeah.
I think we should make it at least two and a half hours. So when I look at that, I'm sure Alex is cringing over there when I said it. But I, you know, since it's, it's not contested and on the, on the town side and it's not, when it was contested, we did actually do a Candidates Night. But in my mind, I think, just to save the work, perhaps, you know, you could have the PTOs, if they're so inclined, call down a couple of questions and then give them to you guys and then let you answer them. You know, in the past, it used to be the Guild had those.
That was good.
But I mean, just to, I mean, again, I don't know what, what particular topics they're in, they are. And that way you could answer and we could just put it out. And the only other thing, like Sally Tobias did it when I was running the town council, I think last year, is one of the things is just kind of tell us, just humanize yourself, something that has nothing to do with the school, some interest, just so people can see you, that you really are a normal human being. Well, semi-normal human being, you're running for this. So I think that's just a simpler, it's just a simpler way. And it, I mean, in terms of resources, I don't really see why the televised or make a lot of people come. I mean, if there was 100 people, they would come, maybe, but they won't. So I just think that's a simpler way.
I wonder if like, if it's not contested, still have maybe some questions you might answer, like the Guild. But if it is contested, you know, to go, you know, you know, we only use it for contested races.
Right.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Michael, so you're running in uncontested, you and Denise, will you be, would you be comfortable with doing a video that we put up as opposed to having to come out on another night and that video just?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'm flexible with.
Do you have a preference?
I'm glad to answer questions in whatever venue folks want to engage.
Denise, would you?
Yeah, it's kind of humorous really because the last time I ran three years ago, and I don't remember, Michael, if you weren't able to come, but I, the video didn't work. So we went through this whole thing and then come to find out, they had a glitch and none of it was recorded. So it was like, okay. And I think, I think it was just, I want to say it was just me or, I'm trying to remember.
No, we were both there.
We were both there. But yeah, the video didn't work. And then they made us come back. That's what it was. Yeah, it was just crazy. But, I mean, I'm, whatever, I'm flexible as well.
I'd be glad to be off camera moderating questions so it feel more natural and you're responding and then just have Alex, you know, do a videotape and, and put it up. And then if we have a contested year, then we do it live body because I think people would be more interested. But in years like this, it seems like it's a lot of work for very little gain. In fact, more people would probably see it in a video than they would if you did it traditionally. So is that okay?
Okay, sounds good.
So that's it for you?
That's it for me, thank you.
Budget, Sue?
Yeah, I'm just sharing with you the most recent update on the current year budget as of January 31st. It is a bit ahead of last year. Couple of areas of concern, but nothing major. Questions?
Good. On, we don't normally encumber substitute amounts. I'm just curious, is that because we have long-term subs that we know are going to be in place?
We do encumber the resident subs. Those are the only ones we have.
Oh, right, right. That's where they are in them.
And substitute, yeah, that's what that is, yeah.
Want me to talk about special ed?
Sure.
I was going to ask.
Okay. So we're glad to see you, Kenny. So to date, in our budget, we put aside a revenue, an anticipated revenue of $200,000. And so we're in February and so far, we have not collected a dime. We have a process in place and Kenny was going to help us with that. And so this is causing me some trepidation in terms of revenue. Also, in special ed, we've had a couple of kids move in that required extra services. So I'm not asking the board to do anything tonight and I may not ever ask the board to do anything, but I just said to Sue, I think it's important for us to plant a seed with the seven of you that there may be the possibility that we ask about tapping into the special ed trust fund. Not tonight, maybe never, but I wanted to make sure that we said it tonight, that revenue and expenses in our special ed account right now are a concern of mine.
Questions for Sue? Thank you.
Thank you.
Student center report?
So right now, the counselors are presenting to each class about course registration for the next school year. And the registration will go on from this Friday, February 7th to February 21st. And also, eighth grade Parent Night just happened this Monday. Also, there's this event happening during advisory and flex time this Friday, February 7th. And the speaker is Sonia Nazario and her talk is called "How to Fix Immigration in a Humane Way." And I'm just going to read like, a short paragraph of her background. So Sonia Nazario is an award-winning journalist whose stories have tackled some of this country's most intractable problems: hunger, drug addiction, immigration, and have won some of the most prestigious journalism and book awards. She is best known for Enrique's Journey, her story of a Honduran boy's struggle to find his mother in the US, in the US, published as a series in the Los Angeles Times. Enrique's Journey won the Pulitzer Prize for feature writing in 2003. It was turned into a book by Random House and became a national bestseller. So I know that there's a lot of classes going to that and students can sign up if they're interested in that talk.
So could you say where it is and when it is?
It's this Friday, February 7th during school, during advisory and flex times. And they're, I think they're also showing it in the MUB, which is, they're actually showing it tomorrow from 12:40 to 2:00, in the MUB Theater 2. Also, Tess and Shawnee Parrott were selected to participate in the concert Women's Choir at the National Music Education Conference in Portland, Oregon. So that's exciting. And also, Bill Reeves was selective, was selected as the 2018 and 2019 New Hampshire Boys and Girls Swimming and Diving Coach of the Year.
Great, great.
Congratulations to him.
That's great.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you. Okay, talk about the survey?
Yep. So I put the board's charge for the survey relating to the reporting of competency-based learning at the middle school. I sought feedback from parents and from staff. And the parents were great. They, we probably got, well, we got dozens of questions from them. Tom and I and Jay met with Andy Smith and what Andy committed to was taking all the questions we threw at him and putting them into a format that we would get feedback on. So we really focused the questions on the reporting system and the questions that would get us to the place where we'd have a better understanding of student motivation. So this is a draft still and the reason that it says confidential is only that the fact that we still have another step in this process, which is to engage parents and staff and board in finalizing what this survey would, would finally look like. I mean, I'm sure this is sort of like, very close, but it's not the final piece of work. And I just want, that's why I said, you know, it's not really a public document yet because it's unfinished. But the reason we gave it to you is remembering that the board's charge is about the reporting system. Did we miss any big idea? Not so much to edit the questions. did we miss any big, um, idea? Not so much to edit the questions because that will be done by the university, but did we miss anything, uh, in terms of how, uh, we're asking the questions? So, uh, that's the conversation we wanted to have with you and after this conversation, then we'll form the bigger committee and go to town.
Okay, so, I saw, like, the no editing, I'm like, oops. No, so, my first one is actually, is, is parent one question, which is, how often do you review your child's quarterly progress report when it becomes available? And it's like, that's not actually, and I haven't actually, I've been ahead of the competency thing and I'm just used to the regular power school thing, but that's not really how parents are accessing and, and following their student. They don't wait till the quarterly or the semester. They, they're looking at it like more weekly or assignment-based. So, so, it's just a really minor edit, it's like-
Well, it's really not an edit, it's the focus of the question, so I get you what you're saying.
Yeah, so, I'm saying, how often you really look at power school? I think you caught the rest of it. I mean, parents, what they're really looking for is, when I look at power school, can I figure out what's going on, you did the strengths and all that? And then we, also, the, the substantive part is, like, we, there was a thing in there about having, um, uh, student-led conferences.
Yeah.
But, the thing that misses really is, when the, the first step is, the parent goes to power school, you look at power school, you kind of figure out the lay of the land and it's, does this help facilitate the parent-student conversation? It's like, you sit down and you, you know, that's the kitchen table talk. You're like, okay, I just looked at power school, what's going on in English? And the question is, i- if you look at the current reporting system, can you figure out what the lay of the land is? Can you start the conversation with your student? And then it's like, you, we do this tier system, you, the parent does the tier system. It's like, okay, you're missing assignments, is it just because you're not, you've been outside screwing around, you're playing on the Game Boy or whatever, or is it something more substantive that I need to call your teacher? And so, you begin to work your way through. And the question is, when you look at power school under the comp, can you figure that out?
Yep. I, I think that's a great question to add. So, just, just to remind the board that, uh, our, our cost for the survey is going to be about $15,000 and it's a 10-to-15 question survey for each group. Uh, but I think what you just hit on, Al, is a really important, um, important component of reporting, the understanding between parent and child. That's great, thank you. That's why it's in front of you guys, just for those kinds of things.
So, I wasn't really trying to edit, but I-
Nope, nope, it wasn't an edit, actually. It's a good one.
I had a couple and I'm probably going to drive that guy. I think that it, for the teachers, you want to maintain anonymity, but if you ask what grade you teach and how long you've been teaching, you could almost pinpoint who the teacher is. So, I think that has to be, you know, you know, maybe, you know, maybe that, don't ask how, you know, how long you taught.
Yeah, the grade is important, the length, somebody's services, I guess, you would wonder if there was a difference between somebody who's relatively a novice teacher and somebody who's a senior teacher. Um, so, you're talking about 60 teachers, I think that those probably main contain, will maintain somebody's anonymity.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, would, would-
Well, I think if you have a really, finally, you know, I think, I think you said, like, 1 to 8, 8 to 12 or so, you know, so, there's something broad like that, so that a lot of people fit in.
Or if you said, like, do you consider yourself experienced versus, I don't know, I mean-
No, I, I think that's, that's a good way to go on that.
Yeah, but I collapsed the, right, collapsed the, instead of less than two years, 2 to 5, maybe put that, you know?
Yeah, just, just a couple others. Uh, I, I'm wondering for the parents whether, because you, there's nothing that says what those letters stand for in the survey.
No legend.
Yeah, so, whether it's just like a, something that says, like, oh, you know, because if you start saying the-
It's dense, those three questions together, you know what I mean? Exactly what you're saying when you do PDE and-
Yeah, I mean, and whether at some point, you know, what does B stand for, what is, you know, just to, uh, and then, and I know that Sean got back to me, but I didn't see an open comment for the, for the parent.
For the parents?
Is that, did you find one? Am I missing that?
Let me see. Uh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
He said, he said was there, but I couldn't find it there, so.
Yeah.
And that's really important, I think, of all the ones, I think that's, from those, so, that's my-
Um, so, Tom, you raised a good point. I, I wouldn't want, but assuming a teacher may have, may feel that providing some information would potentially identify them and make them reluctant, um, are these answers required? Could, could they skip a question?
Well, I mean, nobody's there putting, you know, pen, pen to paper.
No, I mean, I mean, like, the way the system works, oftentimes, you're required to answer a question to go to the next question.
Yeah. I don't think so, Dan. I think, you know, somebody left something blank, it just, you know, you'll have your total N and then you'll have your N for every question.
Okay.
But, I'll check on that to be sure.
Or, you know, you could add prefer not to say, something like that, on something that might be used as an identifier or might be seen as an identifier.
Great. Anything, Michael? Kenny, anything?
Yeah, um, I think it's important, we have the, um, blank spaces for people to put narrative in.
Yep.
I think, um, you know, it's hard sometimes when you're trying to pick between the six of them and I think encouraging narrative is good. I, I didn't know if, um, if it makes sense to also try to garner, um, how prepared the parents felt moving into the system. Um, so, like, the system's in place, we're evaluating, you know, we're trying to get feedback about how it's working or not. Do we want to even get any feedback, whether, did parents have an understanding of what, why we were moving to a system like this? Did they understand how that system was to operate?
So, the, so, the focus on your charge is on the reporting system and so, we tried to, because we had so few questions, we wanted to make sure everything was about reporting. So, we didn't, we didn't get into any global questions. Initially, there were some global questions, but that wasn't the board's charge and it wouldn't fit. The, what you're, what I understand, the board and, and administration, as well as teachers, are trying to get out of this is, are we communicating effectively and are kids feeling motivated in this process? And that's really the heart of the charge, so, we didn't ask any global questions, Ken.
Okay.
Thank you very much, those are really great suggestions.
In terms of administration, uh, we're running close to the February break and we're, you know.
Right.
So, I thought, and, uh, and so, we still have a couple rounds, or at least a round of kind of feedback.
We need to bring the big group together, get their feedback and then we give it back to them. So, you know what, it, it may be that it is in its final form in March as opposed to, you know, meeting the February deadline.
So, we were thinking, like, after, I mean, not have, since, I mean, March 10th is such a huge-
Yeah.
-day and to, to bring this up before the March 10th, we, we thought was not wise, so, but, but as soon after that, probably, as we can.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you very much, that's helpful.
Okay, um, motion to approve Oyster River High School maternity leave, can I have a motion on that? Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the requested maternity leave.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Questions? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Um, motion to approve list of policies, Denise, you want to take that?
Yeah, this is, uh, for second read, um, so, it's just those two, um, policy DM cash in school buildings, um, and policy EBCD, emergency closing. So, I'll make a motion to approve both of those policies for second read.
Moved by Denise, second by Dan. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Those policies are approved on second read. Uh, school board committee updates, uh, manifest committee, Matten reviewed the manifests.
I got two. So, I did, I, on the wellness, uh, there's a subcommittee, which is the Employee Health, uh, Committee. And I, their, uh, Health Trust comes and they talk about their programs and, uh, there's a couple, in the past, they used, uh, people could do a self-assessment and they submitted that. Then, there's a biometric screening that you can do, you go to, like, um, uh, Convenient MD and they do your blood pressure and things like that. And then, there's also a smart shopper program. And so, we looked, participation has increased, but I, I thought what was really interesting that came out of that and it really has a, a, an impact, uh, in terms of, like, the contract. We implemented the SOS plan, which has a higher deductible, I think, were we paying half of the deductible? Is that how it worked?
Yeah.
So, it, it becomes really important when you look at the Health Trust setup, when you do the biometric screening and when you use the, uh, price shopper, a rebate comes in. And so, when you add up those rebates, it becomes really important to reduce the delta of your cop, of your, uh, deductible. And so, if we're beginning to ask people to, if they want to take the, the SOS plan, it's really important that they know kind of like where they can get money or rebates from the, uh, Health Trust program. And I, I think when, that allows the person then to begin to calculate, is it worth it for me to take SOS? So, it may tip them in their favor, so that's a calculation to do or, and they were trying to decide, like, when they talk about the SOS plan and then they talk about the benefits plan, how do you fit, fit those together? And I kind of was like, well, the people who are likely to take the SOS plan are interested, you really want to make sure you talk about the potential incentive program. So, that's wellness.
I could just piggyback just while you're there, Al. Um, so, we've been educating the professional staff since November on the new option of the SOS plan in preparation for, uh, the, the fall open enrollment. That continues in January, February and March. So, we, we're reaching out through the Guild to educate our employees about this particular option. And the difference in cost, if you're on full family and you go to the SOS plan, is almost $8,000. So, it's a significant, uh, decrease in the overall cost. And using this mechanism that Al is talking about, it also decreases dramatically what, what you would have to contribute as an employee, so.
Yes, it's a good one to think about.
We're heavily into the education side of that.
Uh, then, the second one was just right before this, which was sustainability. Um, so, the, uh, this, there, we were initially going to do, like, a plastic, uh, auditor and they've really moved to doing, uh, an overall audit of solid waste of all the buildings to see what we really have, to kind of think about where we're going. Um, there's a UNH, uh, I can't remember what it is.
Intern?
Intern or fellow, whatever, that's helping collect all that are working through the data. And I think that's starting next week or the week after, so that's coming right up and they're figuring out how to do it. I think they're actually doing three samplings that they're working on. Um, on the policy front, um, the, the environmental sustainability policy, uh, which was done, I think, quite a while ago, there was talk about redoing this and they started working on the edits. They asked, how does this work? And I said, well, go through the edits, uh, they also were going to contact you, actually, with the New Hampshire School Board Association and see if there's any existing boilerplate stuff that they can work over. And I said that it would go to the policy committee, now it works, so you guys should expect that. On the, um, the, uh, 50th anniversary of, uh, Earth Day is coming up and so, uh, the Lee Sustainability wants to work with some of the students and have a dinner here at Oyster River High School, so that, that, look forward to that or there'll be more information coming on that. And then, um, there was, it was pretty interesting because I, I said last time, we never get together, we're kind of siloed, which we are, but subsequently, what is this, like, two weeks later, there actually has been some encouraging movement in that. Uh, Dan is on a committee from, uh, Madbury that's looking on how we can link community services. And so, um, I toured with Madbury officials over at the Lee Transfer Station and we looked at how that actually works, which is pretty interesting. Uh, and then, tonight, there was a member from the Lee Sustainability Committee there, as well as myself, and I was talking with Jim Rizicky and, um, there is an outstanding video that comes from, uh, New England Resource Recovery. And the real paradigm shift that's occurred is, most communities thought that they, inclusive of us, actually, of the, of the school district, that, that they could go to single stream or dual stream, which is where you separate cardboard from, like, glass, plastic and that, and that it would be really easy, we'd be, we'd increase recycling rates and everything would be super awesome. And it, that turned out to be a real illusion, by the way. So, what happened was, these big municipal resource sorting facilities were built out, the big one we're shipping to is in Bill Rica. And it turned out that the, the streams of, uh, commodities like paper, particularly, they were generating, were contaminated. China then subsequently said, we don't want your garbage and they implemented the National Sword Program and stopped, uh, accepting it. And so, that's had a real impact in the, the, um, the commodities market. And so, this video from Northeast Recovery really talks about, is it worthwhile to still recycle in New Hampshire? And the irony is, the communities such as Lee, that never really bought into single stream or dual stream and really stuck with the old-school way of separating everything, are in the best, uh, position right now to sell clean stream and to have a stable, long-term, uh, rate. So, so, it's an interesting conversation of how we can work together. Um, the district is pretty lucky that they are able to go up to Maine, use an incinerator as opposed to turnkey. It's a little scary, as we were just talking about today, it's like, it's a month-to-month contract that we're using with our single stream, so, who knows when it'll come. So, again, the more we can facilitate working together, I think the better we're positioned to kind of troubleshoot for the future. So, that's sustainability.
Project, video updates?
Al, could you share the link with that video with, maybe with Wendy?
Yeah, I'll, actually, there's, I'll, I'll send it.
How long is it?
It's, the video is actually 56 minutes, I hate to tell you. It's a webinar that they turned into it. But, uh, there's two things that I shared with the Durham Town Council and I'll send it to Jim, a link to the video. And then, from the video, I actually grabbed four slides of their PowerPoint, which really shows, like, what's the break, I mean, we're doing an audit, but it shows, like, New Hampshire's overall breakdown in categories. It shows what the, uh, sorting facilities, what the commodities are that they come out with. Paper's 52%. And then, there's a really interesting one in there, which is like, what is stuff worth? And I think that's an important one to get along with kids. And it's wild that your milk jugs, number two plastics are worth about $1,000 a ton. They're worth, like, four times as much as aluminum. But, it gives you an idea, and I used to always yell at people for this, if you segregate out office paper, this is eight, we make $80 a ton. If you throw it into mixed paper, it costs $120 a ton. So, it's a really interesting thing and I'll share that with Jim and everyone can look at it.
Get it up.
So, we're making money with these, then?
So, if you sort this.
As optimistic as I've heard you.
I know.
Other than video updates? Um, public comment?
I'm a Lee Sustainability Committee member. I'm Dean Rubine from Lee, or you can just call me Lee.
Lee, there we go. Mr. Lee.
Uh, welcome back, Kenny. It's great to see you. We missed you. Uh, congratulations to Michael and Denise, kind of one. Uh, I, I, uh, looked it up. There have been three contested elections since, uh, 2013. Mr. Carl Piedmont, I don't know if you guys remember that, him, but I remember Michael Williams, uh, ran once, uh, in a contested race and didn't win. And, uh, my favorite, Ms. Margaret Redhouse, who was very much against Lyme disease and was very happy to find out that the turf field did not, uh, support ticks being plastic. Uh, I thought it was a great time at the Deliberative Dinner Party and Concert, so I thought that was a great success. I tried to keep people from leaving at the end, but not very well. But, there were still a lot of people at the Deliberative Session. Uh, glad you're okay.
Thanks, Dean.
Uh, tomorrow, oh, no, Saturday is Math Counts Regional at UNH. I'm, uh, so, this is a math pro, after-school program, uh, for, for middle school. So, our team captain this year is Maggie Zhang and, uh, the rest of the team is James Lee and Jamie Galing and there's a bunch more alternates and things. Plus, we had a fifth grader who's not eligible who did as well as these kids, so I think the future is pretty good. Uh, so, I'm, I'm going to be there on Saturday rooting them on. And if we do well there, we go on to the state and, later in the year.
Let's go.
Uh, I think that's all I got.
Thanks, Dean.
Thanks, Dean. Okay, we have, um, so, just a clarification, so, for Candidates Night, this time, we'll be as usual, are we going to do the-
No, I think we set up the, we'll use Michael and Denise as our guinea pigs and we'll, we'll do it.
So, will you let the P, because there is a PTO that would be, so, let them know so that they're not, like-
Absolutely.
-baking cookies and, I start with the cookie. Baking cookies and, I still want the cookies, I still want the cookies.
Video cookies, Mike, look and hold one up.
They can deliver on the 19th, they could bake the cookies and bring them here on the 19th. We have a school board meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so, we need to just move into a non-public session, so...
Kenny.
Kenny, you know, we were kind of at a loss, you know, because we, you weren't here, and we had to go into non-public, so...
I tried to do a tape recording and send, and it didn't work, but, so, move to, go into a non-public session under New Hampshire State Law, R. 891-A:32, and it would be C, Matters Discussed in Public, et cetera.
Moved by Kenny, second by Dan, roll call?
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny wrote, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes?
Oh, Al Holland, yes.
Brian Serres, yes.
Waiting for Jim.
Okay, so, we're in that, move to non-public?